Getting to order and the first matter on the agenda is accentuate the positive.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna kick it over to Kaylyn and she's gonna start with a pretty special accentuate the positive.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Kaylyn Cross, principal at the high school. We wanted to start out by just celebrating something that's kind of a really big deal. I don't know if you've seen in our publications lately, but PHS has three Ford Scholarship recipients. All three of those recipients are here with us today. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what that actually means and then give you an opportunity to just celebrate them. So the Ford Scholarship is a very prestigious scholarship and it's a really rigorous application process. In fact, students who apply actually start preparing for their application about the middle to the end of their junior year. And they have to prepare essays, they, some of them after the essay process get selected for interviews. And then after interviews is when they decide on finalists and awards. The Ford Scholarship covers a substantial amount of tuition in the undergraduate years. And then also will cover much of their graduate programs when students decide to go to schools within the state of Oregon. So it's a, it's a really, really big deal and these three young women are more than deserving. I just met each of them this year, being a new principal, and I have to tell you in just a short time I've known them, they've already made a huge impact on me. And they've done that in our community as well. So I want to just congratulate McKenna Rowenhurst, who's one of our board reps, Izladi Alvarez sitting over here, and Lady Ramirez. And I don't know, Board, if you want to chat with them or ask them any questions before I continue.
I just want to say congratulations. Very well deserved and we're very, very excited for you.
I am so stoked about this and I'm hoping for four next year because two, three, and now four. I was wondering, maybe you don't know this, but how many people apply in the state of Oregon for this scholarship? I was like wondering about the number part of it. You know?
Yeah, around a thousand and then, and girls, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think about 200 around the state are selected for interviews. So like I said, it is very rigorous. I believe it's around 130. Yes, that sounds right, about 130.
So you know your stats. Good job.
Congratulations. So thrilled that you'll represent Phoenix and families in the future endeavors. Go learn, travel, do all of the great things and then come home. Come home and share all of that great knowledge and experience that you have.
If you haven't seen the kind of information that Joe put together, interviewed the winners and they had some great insight and it was just a nice fun video. So you can see that on our website.
Alright, do you want me to continue? Perfect. Congratulations, you guys. So then into other positive things that I won't talk too much because I know our student reps have a lot to say because there's been a lot going on at PHS. But I do want to shout out to some of the staff who have made some of the last couple of events happen. So first I wanted to shout out to Lisa Robin, who's our leadership teacher. She leads our leadership students who have made magic happen through prom and spirit weeks and an awesome assembly that you'll hear about. Also Myra Silva, Tammy Ingerson, Kent, and Dave, who pulled off our freshman person impressions event last week without a hitch. It was amazing. We had over 100 families in attendance and John Barber, who's our culinary teacher, had his students involved in making dinner. So we had delicious pulled pork and some really great coleslaw. I'm sure, I know you don't want to hear about that, but you do. It's great. Anna and Jim Redding, who always happened to be around to make the high school staff look competent and amazing and well put together. And they did that again at our event the other night. Our custodial crew, Alan Tappin in particular, who's always willing to do whatever we ask of them, even at the last minute when I'm like, oh, I don't really like the tables there. I need them moved. No questions, lots of smiles, make it happen. And then lastly, our future planning center and student resources team this week, who under the leadership of Jordan Ruiz, hosted a brilliant celebration for decision day on Monday where we had the whole senior class just claim what their next steps were, whether that was college, career, or military. And just celebrate the heck out of them with like raffles and cookies and all sorts of stuff. And it was a great event. So that's all for PHS.
I have a quick question. When is the night that you do all the scholarship awards? And I don't know what we do.
Yes, Senior Awards Night. It's the first week of May. I will give you the exact date and we'll invite you all. June, sorry. Yeah, May is now. June. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Holden. I'm the principal at the middle school. Congratulations. That is very exciting. Yeah. So couple of things we want to recognize. We're super proud of our athletes, our track athletes right now. Boys and girls have been competing in the district preliminary meets this week and a number of them are headed to the district meet at North Medford High School this Saturday. So really proud of them for all their hard work and we had a huge turnout, like we mentioned a couple of times. We're also really excited about a number of our after school activities that are happening right now and some of which are starting to wrap up a little bit. But Peter Dany and Patrick Easterwood have been making solar cars with students and they're going to have a solar car race coming up here, I think on maybe the 18th of May. Felipe Reyes has been teaching students how to play the ukulele and he pursued kind of a, I don't know if it was quite a grant, but an opportunity where he was able to purchase a number of ukuleles at a really affordable cost. And then a number of kids have been learning from him how to play that. Erin Bostick, our student support specialist, has been doing an after school homework support, which has been really helpful. And then also we have, our Boys and Girls Club has been really successful this year. We kind of brought that back. I think maybe it wasn't happening for a year or two. And that partnership has been really positive as well. And then the Pirates to Raiders program is also going strong right now and we really appreciate that that's up and running. As well as a parent volunteer who's been doing a fly fishing club, which is really exciting. So kids have been learning how to tie flies and cast and even planning a field trip here coming up in a couple of weeks. And just really proud of the hard work of our students over the last few weeks for smarter balance assessments. I know that's not always one of our most exciting things that we do. But I would say overall, our students were troopers about it. It was a very smooth process. They were committed to it. Our teachers were also super organized. And I just wanted to give a shout out to kind of the crew that made that happen. And I guess to me, it just feels like it went smooth, it went quick and it's already over. We're done with smarter balance, which feels really exciting. So Erica Ochoa, Karen Emmons, Richard Byrd, and Jamar Boyd were the staff members that made that happen and made it feel easy this year. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Santi, Phoenix Talent Raising Academy. I also want to extend my congratulations to these ladies. They're all talent middle school alums, by the way. So, and actually reaching back to Talon Elementary and Phoenix Elementary too. So these kids have gone through our district and so we're all super, super pleased and excited for them. Just to share quickly for PTRA, our elementary students tomorrow are going to be planting flowers in honor of Mother's Day in our STEAM class. They'll also be heading to PHS Spring Harvest Carnival. So they're excited about the animals heading over to see that. Our middle school students are really continuing to love their elective at Talent Maker City. They're continuing to learn furniture carpentry skills in that Rise Up and Rebuild program. They've been making smaller items, including cutting boards, rolling pins, and even pens. So we want to extend a thank you to the Board for supporting that. That's been a great elective for our kids and we're hoping to continue that in future. And then I've been asked for unknown reasons by Shauna to share the Phoenix Elementary positives. So I will do that for her. Her positives. She says, "Phoenix Elementary is full of spirit as they tackle all that spring has to offer. Last week, they had a fun assembly to celebrate regular attenders and introduce primary classes to their intermediate buddies as they show them, shower them with encouragement and inspiration for these state assessments that they're involved with right now." Next week, they're looking forward to honoring their teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week and she knows their hometown celebrities are going to be recognized in style, those teachers at PES. She wants to recognize Christie Dixon and parent volunteer Jamie Palomino for volunteering for our first student haircut event. This was really cool. I saw this. The students were jazzed to get fresh hairdos. One student received his first ever haircut, which was a big celebration for him. Very cool. Lastly, she's, right now she's at the outdoor school with the fifth graders and is thankful to the state, the Board, and staff that made this experience possible for the students. For some, it's truly transformative as they confront new experiences and challenges while developing strong relationships with their peers and staff. So very cool program there. And that is it from PTRA and Phoenix Elementary. I guess no one else came. Alright.
I might just add, elementary principals aren't boycotting this meeting. They have a variety of conflicts that are happening with them. So, and one being an outdoor school. Anything from the Board? Oh yeah, Amy, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Amy Hans, Food Service Director. Sorry, I haven't been here for the last few meetings. So I have a lot of updates that you guys have probably already talked about. I have to thank Sarah for being a judge at our Future Chef Event, Joe for making a wonderful video about the Future Chef Event. And I promised to have one more little presentation for you guys coming soon on the Future Chef Event, but we had a lot of fun. John, our culinary teacher, actually stepped in, brought in some of the kids from the high school as well to help out the kids and got to meet all the young future chefs that are going to be in his class here in, you know, just a few more years. So that was super exciting and I have good news, bad news. I haven't been here as much and been a little crazy because, bad news, I've lost Tessa, our lead at Phoenix Elementary. But then good news, I've lost Tessa at Phoenix Elementary as our lead. So I've been the lead. And I love getting the chance to be in the schools and actually see all the kids and feed them. It's a fun break from some of the computer stuff. So that's really my great news for tomorrow being Lunch Hero Day. So students, thank all of your Lunch Heroes because we love seeing your smiles and seeing those thanks. And I will be hopefully getting around to all of my employees and schools and getting to thank them myself as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And John, did you have something to share for accentuate the positive?
I do. Thank you. Of course, I'm always proud of my crew, but I wanted to give special kudos to my grounds crew for their efforts year round to improve our grounds program. Throughout the district, they have placed bark around most of the young trees, pruned a lot of damaged trees, and improved several garden bed areas over the winter. Aircated, reseeded our sports fields and we've received a lot of positive feedback. I encourage you, as you visit the facilities, to take a look at the grounds because I'm pretty proud of their hard work.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
I have something. I attended the, I'm gonna probably butcher this, but the Dia del Nino Celebration that they had at Science Works with my two kiddos and it was a lot of fun. It was a really good turnout. There was a lot of families there just having a good time. They made it really easy and effortless for us to get there. They picked us up right down the bottom, you know, of our street and bust us all there and then took us back. It was a really good time. I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in making that happen.
I have something to share. The track meet that was held at Phoenix High School, when was it, two Saturdays ago now? And I had the pleasure of working the long jump pit once again and with your wife, by the way, who did an outstanding job. But also I have to say, there were 15 schools in attendance at this invitational and that was pretty outstanding. And I have to say, John Cornet did a great job as did Dave Ernhart. They both put on quite an event, really. And it really put Phoenix on the map with these 15 schools. And I still have to marvel at the the track and the football field and the stadium. It's just unbelievable. It's beautiful. But those two guys really did a great job as your wife did.
It was very complimentary of your, of your stats recording work too, Rick. So good job by you. Did you have something, Tom? We're full of positives tonight. Love it.
Today I was invited to come and hand out coffee with Sarah and Tiffany. And it's so great to come into the buildings, to interact with the teachers and show them that we appreciate them and then interact with the kids. It's fun to spend, even if it's like two or three minutes, I learned that I cannot sound in Spanish as fast as first graders. And we had a great time. So I really appreciate the staff and for inviting me to come in and just kind of see a little snippet of your day. And I apologize for rallying up the kids because there were some classes where it got a little, little chaotic, but we had fun and I think they needed it during testing time. So thank you so much.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, I'll share one thing briefly. Had a chance to attend a family reading night, I think is what it was called, at Orchard Hill last night and it was very well attended. Lots of fun activities for the kids to do and everybody got a book as well. So it was really, really cool. I just wanted to thank, there was a lot of staff there making it work and I know that makes for a very long day, but they were extremely enthusiastic and very loving with the kids and very helpful. So thanks to the staff for making that a really fun event and sharing the love of reading. So, well done. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the Student Representative Report. Nice to have you with us. And you're gonna go first, Brianna? Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to start off by saying that we just had our prom last Saturday. It was super fun. It was at Ashland Springs Hotel and everyone had such a great time. The music was great. Our theme was great. It was old Hollywood. And I've just been hearing all around school that everyone had a blast. Leadership set it up really well and it was really organized. So I really appreciate Ms. Robin for that. We also have our Sparrow Assembly tomorrow and we've raised a lot of money for our Sparrow. Between money wars and selling chocolate bars and just little fundraisers around our school. So we're really excited to be giving our money to the Sparrows. And that's all I have.
Hello? Well, before prom, we had our kickoff assembly and that was really, really fun. Leadership, it took us a while to plan, but overall it turned out really great. We had our dance-off. I don't know if you guys like got to see any videos, but it was so cool. It was really great. It was a freshman versus the seniors and the freshmen did so good. But the seniors, we just rocked it. It was so cool. And it was really, it was like, the school spirit was immaculate. Like everyone was participating. We were all like screaming and we were just so excited and it was, it was really fun. And I'm just glad that that was our kickoff to Spirit Week. And then Spirit Week was actually really good too. We had all the grade levels participating, like freshmen were participating, juniors, like we're actually getting some more spirit points because they've been a little lacking lately. But overall, it was so great. And then it was just a great like end with prom and everything. And then now with the seniors, we're doing our capstone presentations in English. So that's a little nervous. And then also we just been, seniors have been doing our preparations for graduation. We've been getting our cap and gowns. And it's just been, it's been unreal. It's been so crazy. It's going by so fast. It's only a month until graduation and it's kind of scary, but that's all I have to talk about.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the students? Go ahead.
I am really excited that you talked about student and school spirit because if I remember correctly, it was one of you two, because I don't think it was Peyton, or Peyton may have reiterated it as well, talked about trying to re-instill school spirit. And so have you noticed a change from, I guess it was in the fall, right, that we interviewed and then you guys came on as student representatives? So can you talk just a little bit about maybe the growth that you've seen through the year or what you think has helped encourage students to be more involved or participate or have more school spirit or school pride?
So we noticed that in the beginning of the year, a lot of people, especially the juniors, a lot of people who were like affected by COVID greatly and the fires and everything. Our school spirit was really low and we haven't really had a real year besides this year. Last year, we were just getting everything up and running. So I definitely noticed a big change, especially with the juniors. We actually won a couple of the spirit days, which is unheard of. So. But yeah, I've definitely noticed that we've, we've been hearing a lot of like student feedback and we've been taking it a lot more. I know that like, I definitely give feedback to Ms. Robin about what my friend group thinks, about what other people think about our spirit days. And I feel like, once we start really listening to what our students feel and about our spirit days and spirit weeks, then people really start participating. So.
Like what Brianna said, it's so true. Like just hearing what all the students have, like the dance-off and everything, like it was all student feedback and it was all planned by the students. And I feel like that's the thing that like really got us going. And I feel like that's just super important. And now that we've been like making sure we build that in leadership and like also in link crew and then like also just like in everything that we do around the school, I feel like it's super important. And I feel like that's where we've been getting the most participation. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, we'll move to citizens' comments. Do we have a microphone for, will it be that one on the cart? Okay. I'll read this really quickly and then we'll get to citizens' comments. As a reminder, school board meetings are meetings of the school board held in public, not meetings with the public. As a general rule, the Board will not engage in discussion with the public during this portion of the meeting. When your name is called, come forward and state your name. And if joining virtually, please use the raise hand feature. Address and identify the organization, if any, that you represent. Keep your remarks brief and respect the three-minute time limit. Complaints about staff members cannot be discussed in open session and must be handled through a complaint procedure. And with that, we will call our first citizen to speak, Molly McCormick.
Dear school board members, my name is Molly McCormick and I'm a fourth grader at the Outdoor Discovery Program. I have been an ODP since kindergarten. When I first started kindergarten, I was very shy, even hiding under the table at my meet the teacher meeting. I know that being an ODP has brought out my confidence and has helped me do so well in school. Here are some reasons why. I love to read everywhere I go. Four other ODP friends and I just got back from the state Oregon Battle of the Books Competition that was held in Salem. We worked hard for months and were supported by our classmates and teachers. A couple of weeks ago, we took a field trip to the Lava Beds National Monument. We were able to explore lava tubes and learn about the Native Americans that lived there. One thing I really love about ODP is when we do electives. This is when our parent volunteers come into the classroom and lead a fun activity. Then we have the choice of which elective we want to participate in. Groups are formed with both the younger and older students in them. My favorite elective was when a parent brought in his old printer and we were able to take it apart and see the insides of it. I also love dissecting owl pellets and seeing all of the tiny bones of the animal that the owl ate. Another favorite elective was when a parent volunteer baked cupcakes and we got to decorate them. A few weeks ago, we decorated them in Earth Day themes as part of our Earth Day celebration. That morning for Earth Day, we also took a field trip to the Ashland Wastewater Treatment Pond. I enjoy the multi-level classrooms at ODP because I'm able to get help from my older fifth grade classmates on assignments. And I also get to help out the third graders if they need help with their work. Mondays are often my favorites because we have Monday sing. A parent volunteer, Nick Acord, comes into class with his guitar and teaches us a lot of fun songs. Our theme in ODP this year is rivers, lakes, and oceans. Later this month, the older's class gets to go to the Oregon coast to stay on yurts for three days and learn about tide pools and oceans. We also have a field trip planned to Willow Lake and we are using fundraising money we've earned and we are taking a trip on the jet boats down the Rogue River. I love working in our pollinator garden at ODP. One time, we had a Saturday work party where parents and kids shoveled lots of bark into our garden and made it beautiful. We have been lucky that businesses have given us flower donations to our pollinator garden this year. At ODP, we have the chance to participate in fiddle lessons. I have been playing the fiddle at ODP for three years and love the different songs that we're learning for our upcoming fiddle performance. It is being held at Talon Middle School on May 22. You should come. Last, I love ODP because all of my friends and classmates have been with me for the past five years. It feels like a family going through school together and with the same group of students. Thank you for listening, Molly.
Meeting over. Molly, I've been on school boards for seven years and that's the best public comment I've ever heard. Good job. Yeah, May 22nd? Yeah. Okay, next we have, I apologize, Luna Wang, is that right? Wong, okay. Thank you.
I'm a little nervous here, but thank you for hearing, taking my comments. I want to say that I am so very grateful for ODP. I have a son in the third grade. Somewhere around here, who has been part of ODP for the past two and a half plus years. And I would say that ODP has provided him with an incredible foundation, both academically and socially. Encouraging him to develop into a vibrant human being as well as a contributing member of society. Academically, I think that the small group scale, the mixed age component of ODP's classroom structure and their particular emphasis on peer-to-peer interaction have really helped to boost my son's education. You know, having older classmates to model after as well as having younger classmates to mentor have enhanced his own learning immensely. I would also say that ODP's multifaceted and experiential approach has benefited my son. He is an enthusiastic learner, but also an extremely independent-minded individual who loves to bring his own quirky, unique perspective to everything. ODP has been able to make space for him. They're, you know, the incredible teachers there have been able to make space for him and stoke his passion for learning while still ensuring that he gets a well-rounded foundation across the core academic subjects. The many field trips and the special elective that they've put together have also rounded out his curriculum with applied knowledge. I have so much respect and gratitude for ODP's teachers who orchestrate an entire school full of young individuals like my son every day and seem to be able to serve all of their students. Young individuals like my son every day and seem to be able to serve all of their students with a solid educational foundation. While still cultivating each child's zest for learning. Perhaps even more powerfully, O D P has provided an incredible foundation for my son socially. It's encouraging him to expand his awareness of the world around him and of the impacts of his actions on others. I would say that O D P's small relatable scale. Uh, the continuity of community from year to year. And their emphasis on community mindedness have all helped tremendously to enhance my son's social development. And moreover, O D P has provided a network for me as a parent to find support from the incredible teachers. From other like-minded parents and from the school community as a whole. Uh, for me and my son, we who, we, we don't have any family in this area and it's been a godsend. An absolute godsend to find such support. Um, so to sum up, I think the world of O D P and I hope to see it grow and expand to serve many more families to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Tammy Chambers.
Alright, I don't know if I have any more to add. Those are both really amazing and I'm ad-libbing too. I didn't prepare anything, so. Um, I am the parent of a fifth grader at O D P who has been there since kindergarten. And, um, like Molly, um, was very shy and we thought that the smaller nature of kind of a one-room schoolhouse. Would be a good fit for her and she has thrived. Um, she has grown into this confident, smart leader of her class. And I think, um, that a lot of this due, of course, to, um, the amazing teaching staff and the. And the, um, IAs that go, that support them. Um, and then just the, the structure of the school, the one thing that she's really loved and that we've really loved and others have mentioned. Is the mentoring of different ages. She, I've never seen her be, um, she has a little brother. Um, but she has never been so affectionate with a younger person as she is with her, um, kindergarten buddy. And they, she loves her and, and, and is loved back for sure. And that is, um, I think a really great opportunity for her to. Um, show some leadership and mentorship for that. Person as well as just for the other students in her class of fourth and the third graders. Um, so just that mixed learning and mixed mentorship and, um, has, is one of the benefits. Um, and then we love that she's gaining, um, that greater, um. Social awareness and social justice and, um, caring for, um, the. The earth, the place where she lives, caring for other people and really kind of expanding beyond her own world. Um, and looking at bigger issues, um, and that are happening. So I won't add anymore because people did such a great job. So thank you and thank you for continuing to support, um. What's happening in O D P and the future of, of what it's going to become.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, is there anyone online who wishes to speak today? Please use the raise hand feature. I'll give you a moment to get your bearings. Okay, I think we can move on. Will you let me know? I missed somebody. Okay. Superintendent report.
Yeah, thank you Chair Campbell and thank you for the comments and, and after I share, we get to. Uh, share and hear all about O D P. So really looking forward to that. Um, I just have a few things. One is, um, we shared in the fall that Oregon Department of Education came down. And looked at our school resource officer program. And, uh, how we use our student investment account. Um, we fund some of the activities out of the. Uh, that account for the school resource officer program. They did a full-on research project. Um, I don't know if we're supposed to share that we're one of two schools in the state. We didn't know it was a secret research project, but. That's what it sounded like. Um, but, but I just want to share that and follow up because they. Gave great, great feedback, uh, a lot of positive results and some questions and some things for us to consider as well, so. Uh, Rick and Michael were at that presentation as well and, um, can comment if they want to. Um, the other thing I have is you'll have, uh, out-of-state activity trip. The high school TLC class is going to be going to Ocean World, uh, June second and so. Kelly Reed's kind of been. Uh, organizing that and it's kind of her last hurrah as she was retiring. And then tomorrow, I want to reiterate Amy's school lunch hero day. Um, it's, you know, we partner with Sedexo and, um, they're not necessarily all employees in there, but they feel like family. And there are definitely, uh, family members and they do so much for our kids. I remember Michelle at Orchard Hill when I was a principal there. Just knew literally every kid, their interest in such a, such a valuable team member, uh, to help us. You know, serve our mission of supporting kids. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you, yeah.
I had two comments. Um, one is if Kelly Reed is doing a field trip, it is going to be an amazing field trip. I kind of want to go on that one. And two, I want to be a little bit of a rebel, if you don't mind, Michael. I got a text from Peyton. And I didn't see it when it was student reps, so can I do her report, please? She said that she is in base, uh, softball and is running late, so she's not going to make it. But she wanted to remind everybody about the plant sale starting on May eighth going through May thirteenth. And, um, I have a flyer she texts me and if you have any information, I also think it was on the Facebook page for the high school, so. She wanted to do her part remotely for me, so thank you.
Yeah, if you can send that wire or I'm sure you can get it. Maybe we can put it in the, for the minutes.
I posted it all over social media. We, we were sending it in on our email, on our school email, we have it.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Oh, and grad night is, the grad night often is on Sunday at two o'clock at Stone River. And you can still buy tickets if. From Peyton if you want to, or you can get them at the door, but it's a little bit more. And I think that's all I have to help Peyton.
Thank you, Don. Okay, and now the program report. I'll turn it to you and then we'll hear from our folks from O D P.
Yeah, just, this has, uh, typically been about an annual event to do a report when we came to Talon Elementary and share with the board. The last few years, it's obviously hasn't happened for a variety of reasons and. And we were not going to let Erin Mahaney retire without giving a report to the board one more time. Uh, and Jessica Ward, her teacher partner, and it just, uh, it's a great team. I do want to just mention, um, Erin did testify. Um, in Roseburg on the waves and memes a couple of weeks ago, um, and not to embarrass you, but. She, she just did a really great job sharing, uh, the challenges that we, uh, are facing in, in education. And, and the importance of making sure our state school fund is appropriate to serve all kids. And meet the needs of our, um, kids today and, and support our staff, so. Um, I was, got texts right after she testified on just how amazing she did, so. Thank you for doing that for our district, for our state, for all the students that we have in Oregon, so. And with that, I will turn the program over to you all.
Okay. Apparently. I might. So, um, thank you for hearing us and inviting us to present. Um, we're going to start out with just an overview of the program. A lot of you may know, a lot of you were here when we started. But some of you may not know how the whole history, um, was formed. We were started as a grassroots initiative by a group of parents who wanted. An alternative to a traditional classroom environment, but they wanted to work with the school district. They approached Teresa Sayer and, um, she said that she would work with them if they decided to do a magnet program. They had thought initially about a charter program, but they decided to go with her offer of, um, working with her to start a magnet. And they went through a process with the school board, um. We researching other programs around the state, um, and finally came up with, um, a proposal for an environmentally based. Uh, magnet program with an emphasis on project-based learning and the board approved. A trial of one year to see how it go. Um, the building that we're in across the street was also the Boys and Girls Club building at that time. So we shared our building the first year with the Boys and Girls Club. They would come into our classroom every day at two thirty. And so we'd throw our tapestries over our bookshelves and turn things around backwards so they couldn't get into it and, and anyway. After a year, they decided that, um, it looked like it was going to fly, so, um, eventually the Boys and Girls Club moved to their current location. And, um. We came up with, in order to fit a K through five experience into the available space that the school district had. We came up with two multi-age classrooms and that's really where I got involved because I was trained in multi-age. But had never had an opportunity to put that training to use, so that's when I jumped in. And, um, we decided collaboratively that we would, um, we had an op- option to. Explore different curriculums, but we decided since our students were going to take the same state tests as, and meet the same standards. As all the other elementary students in the district, that we would use the same reading and math curriculum that everybody else uses. Um, but we don't use it necessarily with fidelity because of the multi-age setting. We have an opportunity to have our students for three years and that's how we make sure that we cover all the holes, so, um. We're able to differentiate a little bit, um, meet students who are performing above or below the grade level standard. By adjusting the curriculum to meet their needs. And at that time, it was also decided that admission would be through a lottery. Um, we, Teresa and I went to visit Amity Creek School in Bend and, um, learned about their lottery process. And they reiterated the importance of really, um. Keeping to the integrity of the lottery system so that there's no perception of favoritism. Every, it's just strictly, parents put their kid's name in in kindergarten. We draw nine names because that's how many kids we have space for right now. Um, and then those nine kids, when they get to second grade, roll up to the elders and stay with us for, for six years. So that's kind of the foundation of how we were formed and, um, this is, we are now in our fifteenth year. And Jess came on board. We went through, um. I, I had a teaching partner for the first three years who's now out of, had slept the district and then I had. Uh, partnered with Jason Lynch for six years and Jason has now moved on to the middle school and that's when Jess came on board.
My, my fifth year.
Fifth year. Turn it over to you for the next slide.
No, I think you're.
No, am I still? Sorry, okay. I'm still talking, alright, um. O D P is, um, has four pillars on which we were founded and one of them, the first one is project-based learning. And then environmental education, community involvement and multi-age classrooms. Um, for project-based learning, I have had the opportunity to go twice to the, um. Project-based learning training that's put on by the Buck Institute, um, for education, which is the. Premier institution that is responsible for research and training in P B L. Um, we're hoping that Jessica and whoever is hired to replace me will have an opportunity to get trained next year. It is, quite honestly, in thirty-one years of teaching, the best training I have ever had and something that I use. Multiple times every day. It has just become integral to who I am as a teacher and I cannot recommend that highly enough. Um, at the heart of project-based learning is, starts with a question that ignites the critical thinking portion. And gets students started looking for the answers. Uh, next comes the research phase where we include guest speakers and field experiences that deepen our understanding of our topic focus. And from there, students design and carry out a hands-on project that culminates with an opportunity to share their learning in some sort of a public way. Whether that's presenting to a group within the community or hosting a parent night at the school or taking on a service-based task. But public presentation is always the culmination in the gold standard P B L. Um, project-based learning deepens student engagement by helping them make connections between what they're learning inside the classroom and things they care about in the real world. Our work in P B L has followed the guidelines for gold standard P B L as set forth by the Buck Institute. Uh, we have seen, uh, student engagement just skyrockets when there is voice and choice. And their, what they're learning inside the school is connected to something that they care about in their community. We're, and as I said, we're hoping that Jess and the new elders teacher will be able to take this training. Next time it's offered, which will be June of twenty twenty-four. Alright. Successes of project-based learning. My class is working to raise money right now for the street dog project. We're doing a homeless pet project as part of our. Social justice initiative and, um, so they're doing a can and bottle drive and also, um, my second graders have taken on their own project. In preparation to graduate and go on to the elders. They wanted something a little, with a little more moving parts, so they're doing. Organizing a school-wide book shop, but book swap for Talent Elementary. Uh, Jess's class has done extensive work with the classroom economy. They earn money through classroom jobs and then. Have a market day where they're able to buy each other, buy and sell products, um, in the classroom. Uh, they've created their own poetry books, which are just amazing. I hope that you have an opportunity to see what they've written, um. I can't believe what Jess gets third, fourth and fifth graders to produce. It's, it is quite incredible. And, um, they're writing biographies about important change makers. Some of the challenges that we've experienced, right now, scheduling is our biggest challenge and. It has a lot to do with being a small program that's attached to Talent Elementary. Because when we have to follow the school schedule for specials and for lunch schedule and for all of the other school events that happen. Our day becomes segmented and in order to do project-based learning successfully, we need larger blocks of time that are uninterrupted. And that just really has been a challenge. Um. We miss being able to do meaningful work with both classes together, which is difficult also to make happen because our schedules are staggered. And so we don't have time, um, together and we're hoping that as we grow, that we may be able to move into our own. Administrative umbrella, maybe, um, connected with Phoenix Talent Rising Academy and, um. Give us some more flexibility so that we can bring back some more intensive project-based learning.
Alright, so, um, one of the other founding pillars is, um, environmental education. It's in our name, the outdoor discovery program. Um, so, uh, Erin and I have worked on developing a curriculum map that incorporates all of the science and social science standards. Into a three-year rotation, so, um, each of the three grades, um, gets, uh, focused twice. So they get it once in the younger's class as kind of a more cursory overview. And then once again, um, when they're in the elders' class, we do kind of a deeper dive. I do, sure. Um, so each year we have a year-long environmental fo- and, and we also just kind of did an overhaul on our curriculum map. Um, recently, the, the district switched, um, elementary schools from a trimester to a quarter and semester system. And so, um, all of a sudden, our, our curriculum map didn't quite work, so, um. So we've, we've actually partnered with, um, Tara Laidlaw through, um, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy to help us. Um, kind of rewrite our curriculum map. Um, currently, we have, uh, each year, a year-long environmental focus, um, as well as two science or social science units. Um, one per semester. Um, we'll tailor our projects and field studies around either the environmental focus or as research for our projects. Um, one of the challenges that the program has faced with our environmental programming is that. Um, we're having to come up with a lot more of that programming in-house, um, with the move to outdoor education grants. And funding, which is fantastic. Um, a lot of organizations have, uh, switched their focus from all grade levels. To really primarily focus on fifth and sixth grades. Um, and so that does make it a, a little bit challenging for us to go out and find. People who are willing to talk to K through five. Um, despite those challenges though, um, in two weeks, as Molly mentioned, we're going to be, uh, the elders' class will be traveling to Banden, Oregon. We're going to stay in the yurts at Bullards Beach, visiting the tide pools, working with the wash. We're going to stay in the yards at Bullards Beach, visiting the tide pools, working with the Washaway Project, Wash the Shore Project, sorry, as part of our year-long focus on rivers, lakes and oceans. And I'm currently working to design a yearly experience for the older's class that rotates in a three-year rotation, similar to our curriculum map that focuses on a major biome within Oregon. So that they, instead of only getting one experience through their older's career, they, they can have one each year, but in a different location and with kind of a slightly different spin on it. So all right, next.
And they, the, the slightly different spin part is, is important to remember that because when you're teaching three grade levels and you have them for three years, it's really magical. I mean, there's, I think that we probably gain a good three months at least of instructional time that doesn't cost anything extra over those three years. Because when they come back in, we don't have to reassess, get to know them, we just jump in. But with that, it means that we cannot then repeat the same activities and the same lessons every year. We have to have a three-year rotation, which is a lot more complex. And I'm always asking my kids, like for our read-alouds, have we read this one while you were in the class? Have we, you know? But the curriculum map has been just tremendously helpful. And I feel really successful that we've gotten that up and running. And we have all the state standards for science and social studies. And they're able to touch on them in the youngers and then really go deeper when they're exposed to them again in the olders. So community involvement is another pillar of O D P. And all parents of O D P students are automatically enrolled in our parent advisory committee. Through the PAC, parents have an opportunity to help guide the field studies and the projects. One of the things that our founding parents asked for was meaningful involvement more than to come in and plan a party or an activity once in a while. They want an ongoing involvement in, that shaped their children's activities as they learn. And so this way, P B L becomes a family activity as parents are also engaged in the process. The PAC supports O D P activities also through volunteering in the classrooms and through fundraising. They just show up. I mean, you saw it tonight. They, and you know, we have a lot of open communication that I think doesn't necessarily happen in classrooms where you don't know family. It is, it has changed my relationship with my families and my students in ways that I'm incredibly grateful for, and I would never want to go back to the way I used to teach. One of our most popular activities that our families help us with are, are electives that you heard a little bit about from, from Molly. We have monthly elective classes where parents and teachers offer small group electives and students are able to sign up for their elective choice. It's one hour a month, but it's a huge highlight for students because that voice and choice and research shows, and any teacher can tell you, because we've seen it in action, the more voice and choice that you can give to students over what happens during their school day, the more engaged they are. And so, you know, that's another way that we, our parents help us do something that we would not be able to do if it was just the teaching staff. O D P just today went down, you may have seen us if you were in Talent, walking down to the bioswales that are across from, on the, between the railroad tracks and Front Street by Sweetbeat. And we've adopted the bioswales we've learned about as our, on our focus for, on rivers, lakes and oceans. We've learned about Bear Creek and the Bear Creek watershed and where that water goes and what can be in it when it enters Bear Creek and how to keep our creek clean. And so they went down and did some soil sampling and cleaning out the inlets and the outlets and the bioswales and some weeding. We have just, and it, parents went with us. I mean, it just, whatever we can dream up, we've got parents who can collaborate with us to make it happen. And we're really the smallest group of families that could pull off something like this. And sometimes it's a challenge, but being able to work together with families makes it possible to do things that we just would never be able to do on our own. Some of the challenges are that we have seen a shift in what parents are able to do following COVID. Just family dynamics have shifted, work dynamics have shifted. You know, people, what students expect from school has shifted. As a younger's teacher with kindergartners, first graders and second graders who didn't really have a normal school experience in preschool and kindergarten, I see that a lot of my kids are, have gotten really used to having an adult right next to their elbow answering that question as soon as it's asked. And so we've done a lot of our work over the last year and a half or so has been building independence that kids did not have. They'd not come to us with resilience and how to try something else. If you try something and it doesn't, didn't work, what else can you try besides just, it didn't work, help me? So we're really, I've seen a shift this year. It's really starting to come back, but it's taken a while to rebuild those skills that were lost. We have recruiting parents is, looks different. We used to have parents who were, you know, lined up for field trips, for an all-day field trip. And we'd have to say, we only have this many slots, you know, the first five people can come. And now it's been a little more like, okay, we, we need a couple more volunteers. And it's happening, but it just, it feels a little different. And as Jess said, many of our field trip sites are no longer running or are no longer working with our age group because they're focusing on fifth and sixth grade because of the outdoor school for all funding. That's where the money is for them. So we are just shifting a little bit to rely more on our curriculum map and looking forward to being able to be more place-based when we have a bigger campus, which I'm going to hand over to you.
Not quite there, but yet, but so just to kind of tie back to community involvement too, we, we certainly have a lot of investment from our parents and a lot of, of contributions there. But also there's a certain permeability to the community at large too. We bring in a lot of guest speakers and, and that's a really integral part in part of our research and projects as well. So you heard from a couple of people tonight about the multi-age classrooms. And as Erin said, it, it has revolutionized the way we teach. We get to know our families and our students so well. We, and as Erin mentioned too, we came just a ton of instructional time. They come in in September and, you know, they've, they already know what to do. And then it's not just our influence, it's also that peer-to-peer interaction that you've heard about from parents and students as well, that is so valuable. A lot of the lift is taken off of Erin and myself because there are students who can help guide other students as well. So having two-thirds of my class returning makes it really easy for the one-third that's coming in new to be, not just get with the program, but also to be mentored and supported and, and cared for. As Molly said, there is students to not just help with work, but also students to help their work. And so we've seen it have a tremendous effect on students' self-confidence when they go from being the mentee to being able to be a mentor. We have it across grade levels. As Tammy brought up, her daughter Olive and her kindergarten buddy are just about the cutest thing ever. We had a picture of those. We'll often have our, our older students and younger students holding hands on field trips. So it, it, it's enriching in a way that we, we kind of jokingly refer to it as a one-room schoolhouse kind of feel. And it, it, it feels that way. We, we have a lot of support and a greater ability as a result to meet kids where they're at. And Erin also kind of alluded to that earlier about being able to really tailor whether kids need more support or whether they need more of a challenge. Having multiple grades in each classroom allows us to do that. And then also from a parent perspective too, it also does allow for our parents to get more connected with each other too. Having kids who travel not just from kindergarten to fifth grade in a class together, but also across grade levels as well, I know has had a meaningful impact for many families.
So, and I have to put in a plug too for our fifth grade group because we are growing leaders and mentors and they do step into that role with, and to watch them grow with confidence and watch them gain that responsibility and that awareness to be able to say, you know, yes, this is what I want, but I also need to look out for the younger students and make sure that they're taken care of. They really have a maturity that, that is kind of unique for a group of fifth graders.
We recently went on a field trip to the Ginlin Trail and we had a fifth grader who was towards the front of the line. And he ended up helping, I think, just about every single other student from O D P over some of the logs that so yeah, and he just took that on. So that, that's some of the benefit, not just of, of being able to be mentored by somebody, but also being able to grow, grow into that role as a leader, as Erin said as well. So, okay, I think, I think we're on you.
Is it my turn again? The slides aren't numbered and it's throwing me away. It's throwing me off. So are we on alternative education? Perfect. So I'm proud, really proud that a school district the size of ours is offering several different paths of study that are available to our elementary students. This is crucial because parents are looking for a place that's a good fit for their child's interests and their learning style. The more options we're able to offer, the greater the chances that each family will be able to find a good fit for their child. Research has shown that relationships are a huge motivator for young students and positive relationships with school adults help students want to engage at school. A program of choice promotes family and community involvement that instills a passion for learning and growth. Our program is designed to remove barriers to parent participation and allow parents and teachers to work more closely together. When students see their parents regularly spending time at school, interacting with their teachers and discussing school projects at home, it builds engagement because they can see how important their education is to the adults who care about them. One size does not fit all for education. And because we're a parent-started initiative, we continue to have parents who feel passionate about education options for their children show up, not just to ask for their child to be included in O D P, but to continue to show up throughout their six years that their children are with us. And in a time when other districts are adding special programs, our district can be very proud of being one of the first to add a program like this at the elementary level.
So we have a lot of exciting things on, on our horizon. The first of which is that this year we've seen progress on the expansion of a parcel of property on Culver Road that the district owns. It's been included into a U G B with designs for many benefits to our district, including a new home for O D P. This will be significant for us, not only in being able to design a space specific to our needs, but also, as we've said, we're, we're kind of limited in the number of families that we can serve right now just because of the space that we have. So we're really excited to be able to incorporate more families and meet more families' needs through more space. Our current building is also slotted after we moved to be home to a much-needed preschool, which is also an exciting prospect for our community. We're losing two of our three staff members this year. So Erin is retiring after 31 years and, and will be sorely, sorely missed by many families, students, and yeah, well, you better. We're also losing our, our aide Spencer Courtwright, who has just been amazing. He's leaving to pursue his own career as an environmental educator, but near his family in California. Next year, I'm planning on stepping into Erin's position as the younger's teacher to try my hand at the primary grades. And we're working with the district to ensure that the positions that we have to fill are matched with people who have that unique skillset to carry us forward. As I mentioned, we have been working to, to revamp our curriculum map. We've also adopted a new reading curriculum this year, district, district-wide, right? Yeah. And sometimes I get lost in my own little elementary world and I forget the greater world around us. But so, so that's also been something that we've been working on is to rewrite, I'm sorry, write from scratch, a new curriculum map that incorporates three grade levels worth of reading curriculum into a plan that is manageable as well. So there's many changes happening at O D P and they're exciting, but they also present certain challenges as well. We're so lucky to have an incredibly supportive district, an incredibly supportive school board. We are so incredibly thankful every day as teachers and hearing what goes on across our nation to have such an amazing board of, of really dedicated people. We are lucky to have, be supported by our, our parent community that agrees that having an alternative education program is a huge benefit to our community and who we can partner with as we embark on this new chapter for the Outdoor Discovery Program. If you are curious to see how all this happens, and I know, I think Sarah, you mentioned earlier that it was or maybe Dawn, you, you mentioned, sorry, I forget who. But I know both of you came into classrooms earlier and said that it was really a pleasure to, please consider this an open invitation. You're welcome anytime to stop by. Where we'd always, we, we welcome people. And if you're curious to see what it looks like in person, you know, again, please consider this an open invitation. Thank you all for your time and we'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you so much for an awesome presentation. I have many, many questions, but I am going to defer to my colleagues first to see what questions you might have first.
I'll go. I have a couple of questions and I have some other statements to make because I, I can't just let this go by. So what, what does the wait, look, waitlist look like right now? And how does that look when you get a bigger facility?
I am very, very happy to say that I have no idea because I've worked really hard not to be involved with that. And I just teach the kids that they send me. So that's a Cheryl question. Because it turns into, you know, where's my child? Are you gonna, you know?
I know.
And I, I want to be, yeah. So I don't know, I know that there is a waitlist and I can't tell you anything other than that. We just had kindergarten roundup, talked to so many just lovely, sweet, adorable and incoming kindergartners and I get really attached. And so the lottery is hard for me. So Cheryl does that too. And I don't look because I can't, you know? But as far as expanding, we definitely have the interest to serve a larger community. We have kind of a vision that it might be, instead of a three-grade level, multi-age classroom, it might be a K one that rolls up to a two, three, that rolls up to a four, five. There's been interest in middle school. We've talked about maybe having some sort of a hybrid program where kids would spend morning at T M S and afternoon at the new O D P building. It's still kind of up in the air depending on what the facility is that's built and, you know, what that looks like. But we do have, we know that we can grow.
How many students are now in the youngers and the olders? Is it
It's always 27 in each class, which I believe puts us right now at the biggest classes in Callan Elementary. It's, it's a good-sized class. Funny story, it was supposed to be 24.
I know.
But we accidentally, at the first year, invited an extra kindergartner and then it ended up being 27. So anyway, it is 27 in each class, so nine in each grade level, nine incoming kindergartners and nine second graders roll up to third grade and the olders.
And I, I will just mention too, that even though we try very hard to not be part of the waitlist process, just kind of a general sense, it seems like the waitlist is usually longer in the lower grades where there's more of a chance. And then it kind of diminishes as it, as it rolls up because other people find, you know, other places or, you know, things, things happen. And so
It gets harder to move your child once they're established and they get a little
So I mean, so there, there are, you know, maybe better chances in, in upper grades, but also, you know, kids who start the program tend to stay in the program. One other thing that is worth mentioning One other thing that is worth mentioning to is that we do give priority to siblings who are already in the program. So for example, this year, our incoming kindergartners, I think we have, was it five?
Five siblings of kids that are already in my class.
Which when we're having nine incoming kindergartners, that leaves us with four open available slots. So that's another reason why we're really looking to expand that is because we get a lot of siblings and and some years more than others, but but it does make it difficult to to make space for everyone.
It's hard to look at parents' faces when they have an incoming kindergartner and they ask how many slots are going to happen, you say four.
I want to say that this, it makes me emotional because I have soon to be twenty-one year old that went to O D P. And this wonderful woman who's standing here and I went to Phoenix High School and graduated from Phoenix High School together. And I want to say to you, thank you so much for your dedication to this program. And I appreciate that so much. That culture and that community that it's built in that place. So Carly went into, when Molly was talking today, it just made me feel that's an example of the strength that is given in that program and it means so much. Carly went into third grade there. There was no kindergarten at that time. They had so many iterations of that when I, should we have six, should we have fifth? But it was a whole thing when we were there. And during that time, we had a big transition in our family with divorce and we were having a lot of turmoil. And that was such a great place for Carly to go. And the camaraderie still exists in her life now as almost twenty-one year old, twenty-one years old. She still is friends with those folks who were in that group at O D P. So it says a lot to the program that's there. And we particularly were looking for someone for some place for her to be where she would be challenged at a different grade level than what she actually, her age was. And that that, you know, pairing up of folks that you do was huge in her life. And now she works in a Volk Rehab Associated line of, she graduated from college. And and I think it's because of those beginnings that she got at O D P that really helped her. So I am a big champion of this group, but I'm just really grateful for all the work and I'm and I'm going to miss you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Erin has carried this program, you know, all fifteen years from from its beginning and just has so many talents that are
She was involved in the lottery for a while and I'm glad that she said about.
Yeah, it wasn't fun. Thank you, Polly. That means so much. And would you give her my love? Tell her that I she better come by and visit when she's in town. I expect to see her.
Do you have many students that? How many on an average openings do you have as the years kind of go by with the with grades with maybe families moving away? Or there's a fire, different opportunity or different challenges that have? So do you get kids that come in and how does that transition look? Is, you know, kind of developed this? And then educationally, how is that sometimes maybe a challenge or and and an opportunity at the same time as you're pulling in project based learning, maybe from a traditional classroom style?
Yeah, absolutely. Can I can I speak to a little bit? That has been one of the challenges with being attached to an elementary school that does things a certain way that doesn't always work the best for project based learning. It's that, you know, when you are teaching in a traditional classroom, you get new students when new students move into the district. When you're in the middle of a project that students have finished their research phase and they've finished that, you know, they're going into their presentation phase, coming into that doesn't really work very well. So it works better if we admit students at the end of the semester when we're starting a new project. Having said that, we really, it is, it's a very welcoming space to come into. You know, our students, that's part of what they do. We're a community. So pulling people in and surrounding them with, you know, support is is what is their wheelhouse. Jess actually has twenty-eight right now.
No, I lost one, so I'm at twenty-seven.
Okay. But one of her students that moved in went to O D P as a younger and then they had a tragedy in their family, father passed away. They ended up moving out of state and were gone for several years. And now they've moved back to Talent and she wanted to finish out fifth grade at O D P. And it gave her a place to come in knowing those fifth graders that were already there, you know, and finish out her fifth grade, even though she's been at school in another state for the last three and a half, four years, I think she was able to finish out elementary school with people that she knows. So.
We also had a Ukrainian student who joined our classroom last year in the middle. And of course, coming coming directly from Ukraine and and all that's going on there. So I I would just say in term to answer your question about what is the likelihood moving up? I would say usually there's a spot or two that might open up, usually not more than that. A lot of our people stay, you know, for the long haul. But of course, there are things that come up and families do move. The the largest kind of enrollment gaps that we encountered were after the fire. But we still had a lot of people who even when they were displaced and and sorting things out, wanted to return to that sense of community. And in terms of welcoming new students in, indeed, we do provide a welcoming environment and we get kids with a whole range of skills. You know, we can, I can always tell students who have been through Erin's class before my class because they know the drill, they know how to do projects, they know, you know, they know how to, excuse me, give everything their best work. Erin is excels at really pulling the best out of every student. And so I I think that that is maybe the biggest challenge to anyone coming in is that sometimes what we see is really bright students who maybe haven't been challenged in that way before, who whose work has been like, oh, yes, you're brilliant and so you're done. And and we're always asking a little bit more. And and that can be a, that can be challenging for some students. There have been some students where, you know, they've decided that O D P really wasn't their cup of tea and and that's all right too. But by and large, I would say that our success rate is pretty high.
Thank you so much. And I may steal your voice and choice. Student engagement improves when they have a voice and a choice. I think I'm totally stealing that.
Yeah.
I will give credit where credit is due, absolutely, but you may see me talk about that.
The more the merrier.
Any other questions? Okay, you ready? I have some boardsey questions for you, but nothing too scary, I promise. The first one was, is there anything we can do, Erin, to make you change your mind?
You're right.
That was the first one.
You know, I'm I'm pretty, this this year has kind of let me know that it's the right time. I have a mom who needs me, so but I'll be around. I I'm not going away away. I will still be around. I just need some more flexibility.
Yeah, I and I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. That was just my way of saying thank you for everything you've done and continue to do for our district. So this question of what's the opportunity to expand, right? It's really heavy and unknown. So, you know, do we have, how many are in the lottery, you know, with a bigger space? How how big do you think or how much? I mean, you don't always, you don't want to get too big probably, but can you grow it by another classroom? And what what's your vision there for?
I think so. I mean, I our our wait lists, our our historical wait waitlists would suggest that, yes, we could very likely support an additional classroom. And as Erin said, I think, you know, it's it's still, there are still some conversations that will need to be had about in laying out the space and what the space will be able to provide and and how we adjust our classrooms accordingly. It seems at this point like the the most logical course would be it because it would be really hard to expand a three grade classroom to more students. And so it's so, yeah. But having, as Erin said, a K one roll up to a two, three, roll up to a four, five, and then maybe having a middle school component and and, you know, that still has other intricacies to of would they spend part of their day at O D P and part of their day at the middle school? So I think there's still a lot of conversations that need to be had that will likely be kind of determined by as we start breaking ground and building and designing the space, what will we have in mind for that? But there's definitely, there's definitely a desire, I would say, from the community to have more classroom opportunities.
And I would say that when we move to our new space, there's that's going to increase that. You know, people are going to look at that and say, oh, we're, one of our hopes is to have a big garden. And we know one of our parents who's a planner has told us that that is some of the best soil in the valley out there. And so we're hoping, you know, that we'll have a place, maybe a home for Rogue Valley Farm to School where other schools from around the district could come and use that garden as a home base instead of contracting out with, you know, different farms around the valley. We could have it, have it here.
Great. That's exciting. As far as boundaries, only students who live in the district or are we able to, with magnet, how does that work? I don't know if you can answer that or Brenda, if you can, you can answer that. How does it work with who we can accept?
Yeah, I mean, if we get an interdics district transfer, we can, and we do have some kids, I think, that are from out of district. You know, we hold program for in district families mainly. But I I think we have a waitlist with really little to no advertising. It's word of mouth. And if if we expand this program and do some some advertising and recruit, I don't think it'd be really hard to increase the number, especially with new space and facility and things that way. So which could being in a larger, depending on what, how many in district families want to participate in.
You said you typically have one or two openings. So is it fair to stay? I'm trying to get an idea when kids start in kindergarten, what percentage stay the whole six years? Is it ninety?
I bet Heather or Cheryl would have that data to be able to look it up.
I imagine. We rarely have like
Really high.
Yeah.
Would be my guess. I mean, like just just ballpark, I would say eighty-five to ninety percent retention. And and usually, you know, there it's it's whenever we lose somebody, it usually is because somebody moves, like moves out of the area, not just moving out of the program. Yeah.
We did have a family that lost their home in the fire and bought a home in Eagle Point. And bless their hearts, for a whole year, they drove from Eagle Point twice a day so that their kids could go the next year in O D P until their fifth grader graduated. And then their first grader then went to second grade in Eagle Point the next year. But yeah, they, it was really important to them to stay put.
I can see that. What about data on outcomes in in terms of, you know, do you have, do you do any comparisons ever, reading, writing, math, how kids at O D P do compared to the traditional school? Or or even as they matriculate through and get older, the outcomes in terms of, I mean, test scores one data point, but graduation, stuff like that, what can you say about what that looks like?
Yeah, our, I mean, in terms of of the data, you know, we don't really have data on like what they do after school. We we kind of lose some some of that. And I think it also gets a little bit harder to track once they go to middle school and high school because then they're kind of incorporated more into that campus. But in terms of the data that we do have, it is really about, comes down to test scores. And our our test scores are usually historically high. We and and it's not just because that's our student base. We have a whole range of students like any other classroom. We have students on I E Ps. We have students with, you know, all all kinds of academic needs, not just kids who need academic acceleration. And and I really believe that a lot of that data comes from that academic time that we gain through having them for three years. I I have a student who just gained ninety-five points on his i Ready reading diagnostic from the middle of the year to this end. So and I mean, and that that's like a huge outlier, but that's just one example of some of the work that we can do when we really know those students.
And I have to put in a plug for this too, because one thing that I see happening a lot is that when we end up with, you know, in at a grade level, we have extra students in one grade and not enough in another grade. We put them together and it's a one year thing. That is not multi-age. That is totally different. When you design it with intention and when you are able to continue it for more than one year, at least, you know, at the very least, if we put those classes together and we said, this is a two year cycle, we're going to put these students together and give that teacher two years to make sure that they've covered the holes, then they're not trying to frantically teach two sets of curriculum simultaneously. They're able to pick and choose. I'm going to teach the second grade science curriculum this year and the third grade science curriculum next, you know. But keeping them for three years is magical. I can push my students to do things that I would not be able to push them if I only had them for one year. And small groups are a magical way of teaching too. But in order to do small groups, you have to have routines and structures that are set up so that it makes it possible for even very young students to work somewhat independently on something meaningful. It can't be busy work. And that takes having people for more than just a short time. It really, really is magical when you, when it's created with intention and with longevity.
And you've seen, you know, we've kind of given a glimpse into, we've, I've talked about curriculum mapping at least ten times during this presentation. And that's because it is so essential to what we do, like having that plan, being able to know where we're heading. And that has been something that I feel has been really transforming for my teaching career is that I see where they're going. When you have students in your classroom for one year, sometime, you know, we we try to do it all and we think that it's all important and I have a better sense. It is all important, but I have a better sense, having them for three years, the things that they really need to get and the things that I'm like, yeah, we can get that next year. We can, we have some time on that. So knowing where they're coming from and where they're going to is a huge gift of multi-age.
Wonderful. That was my hunch. I'm curious what the data proved out for you all. So any more questions?
Thank you so much for everything you do, you've done and for a wonderful presentation. We appreciate it. Board, we're scheduled to take a recess after the consent agenda and the action items, but do we wish to move that up? Okay, we're going to take a nine minute recess. We'll be back at seven forty. All back? We are, we are back. Okay, excellent. Consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Rebecca. Any objections? Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. Action items. Contract for C M, G C for T E S and T M S seismic upgrades.
Yeah, you have a letter in your folder and or on in your board packet. Sorry. But Outlier was awarded. They were the only one that submitted a proposal and they are a company we use many times and we really like Outlier. Recommend that for approval.
The scores were really low. Can someone talk about why those scores were so low on their? I mean, I know they were the only one. John, maybe you can talk on page two about this. If John's back, John may not be back yet. See, oh, there he is.
Yeah, I'm here actually. I don't have page two in front of me. We actually, because we evaluated We actually, because we evaluated this over spring break, we actually had a very low turnout. For people to grade it, I think there was only three people. And two of those three were new to it, had never done it. So they were very careful. No, this was not. But yeah, this landed over spring break and trying to get people that had actually done one before was was kind of tough. So the the graders had never done it before, were kind of new to the process and a little hard to grade when you only have one to compare to.
Is this accurate though, John? Fifty-three, average of fifty-three?
I mean, that seems really low.
I don't have that page so with me. So I find it hard to believe because I thought it was quite a bit higher than that. Actually, let me see if I can pull the email up where I sent it.
Okay, yeah, while you're looking at that, I I am curious about that because that would be a failing grade in in any of our classrooms.
Well, and outlier has been, I think, a great partner for us. So
Yeah, even though they're the only ones I
Even though they were the only ones out of a
Right.
Five-point scale to get a less than twelve points.
Yeah, I can't imagine it's correct. That's but I need to pull it up to to verify.
Okay, all right. While you're doing that, let's move to I two, which is board policy I G B H D. Program exemptions.
Yeah, this was presented for discussion last time in a lot of red language and we just staff recommends the blue language with teacher or principal.
Okay, I have a motion. Thank you, Rick.
I move to adopt the recommended policy changes as presented to policy I G B H D. Program exemptions.
I second that.
Thank you, Rick, seconded by Polly. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don? I vote yes. Policy is approved. Policy J G E expulsion.
Yeah, same way, just colors of blue is recommended by staff and there's some crossed out language, but that's what we discussed last time and I'll answer any questions.
That blue language is language that comes from council or from OSBA's council, correct? And then we're just choosing between the two of them.
Yeah, and that's our current practice.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, we have a motion.
I move to adopt the recommended policy changes as presented to policy J G E expulsion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly, seconded by Rebecca. Any discussion? Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don? I vote yes. Policy is approved. J F C J Weapons in Schools.
Yeah, this is one we brought in the fall and we thought it was connected to a different policy, which it isn't. This is just a revised policy recommended by OSBA. That has no other connections and we recommend the blue language.
Thank you. On this one.
Okay.
I move to adopt the recommended changes as presented to policy J F C J Weapons in School.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick, seconded by Rebecca. Discussion. Okay, we'll vote Rebecca. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don? I vote yes. Policy is approved. Yeah, John, how we doing? You got any updates for us?
Uh, yes, actually, sorry. So I just looked at the score sheets. There were four scores and the top score was a hundred and fifty and all four scores were a hundred and fifty. So it's definitely a typo.
We just had a entry error. Okay, that's weird. Thank you. I was like, I don't think I can approve this with these scores.
If it helps a little bit, they also did Phoenix Elementaries seismic and that project went off without a without a hitch. They were really awesome to work with.
Yeah, great. Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to award the contract for construction manager slash general contractor for the T E S T M S seismic upgrades project to outlier construction company.
Nope, that's not gonna work.
Second. Okay, thank you, Sarah, seconded by Rick. And any discussion?
I I just might say we'll update this.
That's what's gonna be my question. Can we update this so for public records?
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe just include the score sheets.
However, it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have H M K kind of redo those and just make sure it reflects that. Great.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion? All right, we will vote Rebecca.
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. Contract is approved. Okay, item I five, B T A step three grievance or inclement weather. Have a motion on this one.
I moved that the board waive participation in the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three grievance in accordance with article eighteen of the collective bargaining agreement.
I second that.
Okay, moved by Rebecca, seconded by Polly. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote Rebecca.
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. So I guess the only question is notifying who who will do that? Let be myself or Denise?
We'll talk about that process.
Okay.
That will come from the board.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're scheduled for a recess. Just kidding. Okay. It's it's written on here, so we must do it now. Information and discussion, facilities and bond update. John, back to you.
Good evening, board. I wanted to, I I have several things to go over, but I'll be I'll be quick. Culver Sports Complex, the first master planning meeting is set for May seventeenth at five thirty P M in the P H S library. This will be all of the special interest groups will be there. And of course, we would love to have any of you that would like to attend. Be there to to hear what everybody's saying and 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 provide input also. As you know, over the summer, we deep clean the schools, complete all fire life and safety inspections and support summer school. Y M C and the Boys and Girls Club. In addition to those operations, we always target special projects throughout the district. And I'm just gonna cover the projects that we have planned for the summer. District wide, we will be installing over two hundred thousand dollars of new kitchen equipment to replace and update the Sedexo kitchens using carryover kitchen funds from last year. At T M S, we will, we plan to polish thirty thousand square feet of concrete in the hallways, paint the hallways that haven't been painted and updated yet. Recarpet eight classrooms and remodel the school-based health center to accommodate an additional counselor for La Clinica. At P H S, we will be constructing a new student-based healthcare center and complete the playground project this summer. At Orchard Hill, we plan to stain the underside of the play canopy and trim all of the trees on onsite that needed. At T E S, we plan to paint all exterior doors. At P E S hope, I hope to finish obtaining bids on the roofing that wasn't replaced on the seismic project and I'm hopeful for completion of that project over the summer. At the transition house, we will be doing all new hard surface flooring, replacing the carpeted areas to make wheelchairs and walkers easier to move and cleaning more efficient. And that is our current summer plan. Any questions?
Yeah, seriously. And and all of that's gonna be done by our team internally. You're not having to hire, are you having to hire outside contractors to do any of that?
We will be hiring outside contractors to do the student-based health center at the high school because it's a pretty extensive remodel.
Yeah.
We we have architects and engineers on designing as we speak.
Okay.
And that one will be hired out. Beyond that, everything else I mentioned will be done in-house by our maintenance and custodial crews.
Incredible. Awesome. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, financial update?
The only update I have, yeah, it's mean is working on the budget and we should have folders or electronic copies by tomorrow that you can get before the weekend. So he's probably still working there right now to to finish that up.
Can you share an update on A D M security or would that not be appropriate at this time?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that. Actually, I was just reading email too during our nine-minute break. That it is, the numbers have kind of come back as we shared last time that there was some discrepancy on A D M and it it overestimated Santee Am's contribution and really reduced ours. So it made like a one point six million dollar deficit just for this year. That has been corrected. Actually, Santee Am had some kind of issues with A D M and it's it wasn't their issues. It was how the A D M is calculated, especially with special ed student and how their virtual students are connected to the district. And it it just the formula messed up. Michael Wilfong is amazing at O D E, who does all the A D M. Essentially, our legislatures are have a specific ask now moving forward as of tonight at about six P M. And we will be looking forward to sharing some talking points and making sure that our legislators know that that'll be an important piece of legislation that we need to move forward, not only just for this year, but the the whole next biennium and we're thankful for Pam Marsh, who is kind of leading that charge. So we'll get some talking points out as soon as we can after we go through that.
That will require some legislative.
Absolutely, absolutely. And over the last couple of weeks, it it we I think Yasmin and I think we were pretty stunned by the news, but it seems to be a fairly easy fix. And with a lot of support.
Okay. Thank you. That was kind of a pseudo-financial and legislative update. So with that, we'll go to K three legislative. OSBA. Don, you wanna start?
Not really. I'm really not prepared. I haven't been to any of the meetings. All the meetings that I usually go to to get my knowledge, I was either unable to attend or they were canceled. So I'm really not on this, not on the ball like I usually am because I usually have like all these meetings, bang, 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 and I haven't attended any, but maybe Sarah can help fill in the gaps. I apologize for that.
Just I was like getting out our weekly email. But Senate Bill eight nineteen, which is really looking at how abbreviated day in special education could be impacted throughout the state is going for its public hearing will be on Monday, May eighth. And Emily McEntire, you know, sent her email out to everyone. So just encouraging maybe a conversation with Tiffany about essentially what that looks like. If those rollouts, that's probably the incorrect word and I apologize. Just if some of the things that are in that legislation pass, how it would impact our district and potentially other districts, our size. And so look at that Senate bill over the weekend, maybe with your budget reading and maybe connect with Tiffany if you can and and see if there's something, you know, that you may want to write or or do something. Anyway, just in my recommendation would be to get informed about Senate Bill eight nineteen and what it could look like for a district. And I was really excited to hear that Erin Mahaney spoke at the Ways and Means Roadshow. I think that's great hearing from, you know, boots on the ground a teacher and what the impact for not funding at the full level means direct to classroom. Friday is the procedural deadline for Yes, so they have to have a work, they have to have a meeting scheduled by tomorrow in order for bills to continue to move forward. So Senate bills have to have their House date. House states have to have their Senate date and everyone, of course, is looking ahead to the May seventeenth revenue forecast to see how much money is left after the governor's big houselessness, you know, housing and homeless issue and early literacy, how much is gonna be left to spend on other things, including state school fund.
So there's still a chance that the projection we've been given so far could change on the on the state school fund, the nine point nine?
Most that I've heard are gonna be excited if there's a ten in front of that number, like if ten point, ten point one. I really don't want to say out loud that they don't think ten point three is a reality, but looking at the revenue forecast and how much money has already been spent and how many other things need funding in the state out of that that one pocket of money. So May seventeenth will really give more insight into how much more. And then the other Senate bill, I think it's two eighty-three and I apologize. It just really looking at workforce is another one. It's either two eighty-three or two ninety-three, paying attention to the classified to the workforce shortage and and how compensation for that is another one to be paying attention to.
Great. Thank you so much. Item K four, E D I update?
Okay. Good evening, board. I just have a couple of things to share. As you know, we've been working on some additions to the some recommendations for the J B B equity policy. Our committee has done a really, really thorough, great work in looking through that and consulting with Brent and O S B A. We'd really like to move forward with recommending a possible administrative rule to accompany the the policy and Brent and can can talk through that policy but or that process, but we'd hope to bring it to you in the next few weeks or months. And the last thing I want to share is that we are involved with a really cool opportunity for youth. Phoenix Talent Central Point and Ashland, as you know, are working together around student success, safety and belonging. And we are hosting or participating in hosting a unity conference. It's very similar to the Black Youth Leadership Summit that has been hosted the last few years in the valley. It's open to all sixth through twelfth graders. It'll be our first first conference, so we hope it will grow and and be something that becomes a similar tradition. Really just focused on acceptance, unity, belonging and safety for youth in our community. And we are looking to have groups of youth come from all different high schools and middle schools. And so far, we've had a really positive response. And I'll be happy to share about that after the event. It's being held on May twenty-third in Ashland and I I shared the flyer with Denise and we can can pass it on to you. Please feel free to share that opportunity. It's free to attend, free lunch, some good giveaways, good door prizes, guest speaker, some group activities, breakout sessions. We hope it'll be a really cool event for you. Any questions?
I just might share the E D I advisory committee has worked hard on that policy at the direction of the board to really get some actionable. And when they came back with a policy recommendation. My first initial thought was maybe we put this in A R and we've sent it up to O S B A. My first initial thought was maybe we put this in AR and we've sent it up to OSBA and they they had the same recommendation. Typically, we don't get into writing policy. Uh we let that leave that to OSBA, but I think our. Um board and our EDI committee is uh with this particular policy to make sure it it works for us. And and our district and um yeah, we'll have a recommendation, maybe the first uh um. Meeting in June for the first reading. And thanks to Kelly and her team for all that work.
Um one thing I just thought of to add is uh as we looked at that, those recommendations and that work, there's a lot of overlap that will likely. Also be applicable to our strategic plan. So not only is it is it work that can apply to the to the policy, but it can really be actionable. In terms of what we see and do for equity in our strategic plan.
I look forward to seeing it. Okay, um item K five is the board meeting calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Very similar to uh just with the dates changed, um very similar to this year's.
I was looking for that March work session and it looks like we just it was just a calendar thing because the second. Thursday will be probably over spring break, right?
Yep. We didn't add that work session in there. We could for that and look at that time, but it'd be the twenty-first, which. I don't think it is a spring break.
Okay, so. Yeah, that might be something.
The March uh work session.
Personally found that valuable. I don't know how you all felt, but the March work session was was a good opportunity to review discipline data and. Survey data, stuff like that, so, yeah.
I think it's easier to to front load the date versus trying to find a date that works with everyone's calendar, so. Yes, please put it on there.
It also, uh and you you bring up a good point, um and we have a requirement to share discipline data and things of that nature with the board, so that. That might just be an ongoing um student safety type general topic for that work session, so it's good.
I have a concern on the calendar date. On August tenth, the summer conference is August eleventh. And so I think some people might be traveling um that day and. Um I would hate for them to have to get up really early in the morning at like four in the morning to go to a summer conference, so maybe change that if possible.
We could either modify it to the ninth or just move it to the next week. We only have one meeting scheduled in August typically, just because of the timing and getting things ready, so. The middle of August isn't August seventeenth could work as well, but um. Take it. Yeah, or or sometimes when those happen, we move it up to the Wednesday at the same week.
Let's see.
Might be nice.
My plans to be out of town, I think on the seventeenth, so um but. Don't work around mine.
Okay. Um and then I was wondering about this, the first regular board meeting on the sixth. It's really close to the fourth of July. So picky, huh? I know. So we might just want to consider that too. I think I have a trip planned. I'll check with them. Correct. Yeah, that's a big one.
And we vote for chair and vice chair. But you don't want to delay that too long because, for instance. Me being vice chair, I wouldn't be sworn in, so if you were out of town and someone had to do something, I wouldn't be able to do anything and it might be a problem.
Right. Does it have to be after the first of July? Could it be? I don't. What's our choose?
It has to be after June thirtieth.
It has to be.
Yeah, just because of the terms of.
What's what's the summer board retreat? Do I do I know anything about a summer board retreat?
We've done it last.
It's not really a retreat.
It's it's um, no, we don't do trust falls stuff, no, um.
No, we don't actually go anywhere.
Typically been goal setting, visioning type stuff. Yeah, so, okay. So we'll look at the, especially the August. Is everyone else going to be around on the sixth? Yeah.
That's a Thursday.
Okay, then I'll just get my butt back here.
When are you leaving town or can you do it remotely? I mean, I'm just.
I'll just get back here. I'll just make sure I'm back.
Because, I mean.
Oh, there is a virtual option, so.
Yeah, depending on circumstances, I may want to be here, we'll see.
What do you want to do with August tenth and when we bring it to us?
Do we want to do the ninth?
I'm fine with the Wednesday, but I don't know how everyone else is with the, I don't know how it works with moving days of the week with how.
I don't think it's.
Brent?
What's that?
Wednesday is Wednesday, okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Wednesday or Friday.
Denise, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that with the ninth and then add a work session on the twenty-first. Of um March, sorry, of March. That's a little important distinction between those two months. Okay. Guys are so picky. No, I'm just kidding.
She already looked at.
It was mostly me that was thinking. That's okay. Um, okay, uh so item K six, surplus item. Speak into that.
I I think I can. I think you have have some.
Pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
It's hard to believe we have a service truck nineteen ninety-five, but yeah.
Yep, we do. We also had policies from.
I I would say our service trucks older than our policies now.
But pretty straightforward, we'll take a talk.
Did you have something on that, John?
No, we were fortunate enough to replace the Sedexo van with uh carryover. Food service funds and uh that has is why we actually have this. Uh truck that we'd like to surplus.
Okay, well, she's she's done well for us for a long time, so, okay. A seven, inter inter-district transfers.
Hmm in your packet, you have uh um what we currently have this year with transfers out and transfers in. And then the proposed uh for transfers out and transfers in and we have. Uh some in the hopper right now on both for transfers out and transfers in and this will be for action. Next meeting. Just. To clarify, there are uh a recommendation of no transfers out except for hardships, which we've done the last couple of years. And then those in slots are uh what we've done the last few years as well.
Yes, and that's inter-district, so that's out of i- it's outside our boundaries.
Outside our boundaries, yeah.
Do we have a net of? We have a net positive on that right now.
Uh for this year, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which is good. We haven't done that um. We haven't been in that position for a long time, especially that net positive now. Some of these are fire impacted and so we've had them um fill that inner district transfer out during that time to make sure that they're. In in case there that leniency is not um granted anymore, so, but still, still pretty good.
Questions on that? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so are the other districts doing the same thing? I know back in the day, they were doing zero. Out and as many in since we have to have districts approved anyway, so is that what everybody's doing?
Um, the uh Medford beta policy last year, and I don't know what they're doing this year, but they they just let everybody out.
Oh.
They don't, if you request a transfer out, they they grant that. I think they were, you know, spending a lot of resources and time going through those because as we know, it takes a lot of time. Um, that was a time where they had uh. Um increase in enrollment though too, so I think it was a a strategic plan that way. I don't know what they'll do this year. Um, the other districts are, I I think they do slots. Um, really, I get most of just Medford and Ashland. I don't think. Uh Ashland approves anything but hardships as well, but I don't know what they'll do this year. It's a good question. If. You would like to suspend the rules and uh adopt this today, we could consider that. Um if there's no questions, because we have people calling. Every day on if I can get in, if I can register. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so um if. If that's something that you'd like to do, we would need a motion to suspend the rules to move this item to an action item. And we would have to vote on that and then we would have to have a secondary motion um. To approve uh the. Inter-district transfer uh.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah, thank you. Okay, so.
I'll make a motion on that.
Okay, great.
Move it to an action item.
Thank you, Rick.
Second.
Seconded by Dawn. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah? Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so now uh. A motion to approve the inter-district transfer slots as presented. Somebody wanted to say so moved. Thank you, Don.
Can't do that. No, Chris, Henry, you can't do that.
Who's what?
You just can't do it.
Okay, fine.
Sarah says she knows, um.
I believe you, Sarah.
I move to adopt the recommended transfer in and out slots.
Thank you, Dawn.
Second that.
Thank you, Polly. Discussion.
I I just want to make sure um we do, I think it's updated in your uh folders that our special programs are. Reserved for in-district um families and so not taking the spots of uh. Filling those without a district, so those could be ODP, they could be our self-contained special ed classrooms, those types of things, and we're. We're full right now on um all of those, so.
Okay. More discussion.
And that doesn't, um that's not reflected in any sort of hardship type of thing to come. Is hardship only going out?
No, hardship's coming in as well, yeah. And it could it could be reflective, but um. If if there's, if there's not room in the course, even if they. Um, for example, I mean, this is a good question. If they want to uh come into our district and they're a fourth grader Orchard Hill. And fourth grade is is there, it's higher numbers and maybe some of our other fourth grades. We say, well, Orchard Hill is not available, but Talon Elementary is. Phoenix Elementary is, so.
Red Levo? Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. There you go, Denise.
Thank you.
Okay, K eight, uh board policy, G C B D F, G D B D F. Paid family medical leave insurance. Version two is there for your information. I have a question on this. I know I emailed about it. I just want to be. One hundred percent sure because when I read um. When I read equivalent plan instead of using paid leave organ, that to me sounds like we're the ones funding it. So this this involves the administration of it, correct? Not. Can you elaborate or make that clear for us?
Yeah, so um. American fidelity applied the equivalent plan with the state. They were approved. Um, so that means that the four percent that the district has to pay and the six percent. That the employee has to pay, that goes to American fidelity. Rather than the state and then the applications for the benefit goes to American fidelity and they pay them out. One of the biggest benefits, I think, for us is that if you went with the state. First of all, I think people were a little bit concerned about the state and how quickly they'd be able to process. Everything um.
The unemployment in twenty twenty. As an example, or healthcare rollout a few years before that, yeah.
And so um if we had chosen to go with the state, um all of our employees. Would ha- and we would have started paying that tax January one. But because we went with an equivalent plan, we start September one, so it saves us and our employees a little bit of money. And like I said, I think we have a good relationship with American fidelity. They are going to help us explain it to our staff. Um, they're actually going to come in the early summer to meet one-on-one with staff members to go over a variety of things, but that'll be part of it. Um, and I think also just when staff is in the process of applying, um they'll be readily available. You know, I just think they'll be um more helpful for us and for our staff as we move forward.
Okay, so with regard to the funding aspect of it, because if you just. Do the backwards math, it's basically one percent of our payroll, if you will, would be going to American fidelity, so. I don't know what that is, four hundred thousand dollars. It it's it's. Probably not enough to cover, so is it, is it, how does that function if we have more people? Who are drawing benefits than we have contributed in the tax?
So that's why, you know, it's like paid medical family leave insurance, right? And so our insurance company.
Okay, I see.
To hope that that doesn't happen.
Right, okay, gotcha.
As as the state, right?
Yeah, okay.
So my understanding when doing, I'm sorry. Was when, instead of taking it on as the employer, when you went through an insurance company to. Essentially do the work, right? Like if they're administrating it, then that's one less thing. For the district to manage. I thought there was a higher percentage that had to be paid. If they negotiated it to the. To the point four and the point six.
And in fact, that's that is required. Cannot cannot um require any additional payment. It has to be absolutely equivalent.
All right. Good to know. And kudos to the district for also letting that huge.
Yeah, I'm feeling pretty good about it.
I I also feel like our our mem- our staff will get better service and we'll get better clarity when we. Look to, you know, fill in the gaps and our business department will have better clarity as well, so. Um, yeah, it it'll it'll be good. It's new for everybody. But, yeah, I feel good about it.
Thank you. I get it now. Thank you. Okay, so that's there for your review. We have to pass that because we are off offering an equivalent plan. That's. That's a recommended policy from OSBA to in support of that effort. Um, okay, and then we have um. The May eighteenth agenda is there for your review. That will be right back here at six o'clock. Oh, yeah, that was supposed to be on here. I don't. Oh, that's, yeah, um, student. Can you, yeah. Okay. Oh, I see. It's, okay. Are we okay talking about that on the eighteenth?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
My only thing was, can we make sure the student reps um know and I'm sure we'll take recess, but let them kind of give a heads up that. We're going to want them to stay for that discussion.
Yeah, um.
At least I would like them to stay for that discussion.
Or can we move it on the agenda to something?
Yeah, we could possibly do a, we have a program report that night, but we could possibly just sort of move it in the slot.
Have the recess after the very first information and discussion. You can have a recess.
That's true, we could do that too.
If we have another longer program report, we may lose them anyway.
Yes.
Even before or after a recess.
We will make sure that program report is later on the timing.
It's a very good report tonight, though. It was still very good, but it was very, yes, okay, we are.